All right. Well, we are here at our fourth session, next to the last, on the study of the Gospel of Mark, and we're getting into some really good stuff. So I hope you had a chance to read chapters 11, 12, and 13, because that's where we're gonna put a lot of our energy tonight. And chapter 13 is a doozy. So, um, so we, we might kind of push through 11 and 12, so we have a good amount of time to spend on chapter 13. Um, so let's, um, begin with prayer. The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Amen. Good and gracious God, we thank you for your presence with us as we gather to study your word. Let your Holy Spirit be our guide to open our hearts and minds to see you and to know how it is to live as your people. Let your scriptures, let your holy words speak to us. In Christ's holy name we pray. Amen. So do you, what questions do you have about what we've already done? Do anything lingering from last week?
I don't have anything.
Good. I think we got down to, um, 10 verse 46. I'm not sure we talked about Bartimaeus.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, I think we got down to about that part. Um, and I want you to look at verse, um, 48. Um, it's in 10, chapter 10, verse 48. He is a blind man, he is hollering, um, as he, um, knows that Jesus is passing by, and he's sitting on the roadside. Um, and so he cries out, um, actually in verse 47. "Jesus, Son of David, have mercy on me." And then many ordered him to be quiet, but he did it again. "Son of David, have mercy on me." That is often referred to as the Jesus prayer. Um, as the very short, "Son of David, have mercy on me," or you could shorten it, "Jesus, have mercy on me." Um, that is often lifted up, uh, in, um, in the realm of prayer life as the Jesus prayer. Because it's short, it's sweet, it says what, you know, it communicates the message of asking Jesus for mercy. Um, and all that comes with that mercy. Have you ever heard of that before?
Yeah, but I didn't know from.
Yeah, yeah, there's the verse. Um, and so, um, "Son of David," or just Jesus, "have mercy on me." And Jesus stood still and said, "Call him here." Um, and so, um, they called the blind man. Throwing off his cloak, he sprang up and came to Jesus. It made a great description. He sprang up, um, and he came to Jesus. And remember, this is a blind man. You know, so he's just listening to what, to what is happening around him. And Jesus says, "What do you want me to do for you?" And the blind man says, "Teacher, let me see again." Um, I think that's an interesting question for Jesus. What do you want me to do for you? I find that to be a very open and eat and, and profound kind of question. Jesus didn't assume what Bartimaeus wanted. And so he asked, "What do you want me to do for you?" And I think that's, that's important for us to hold on to, that Jesus is seeking to know what is the desire of our heart, you know? Um, and so the blind man says, "Let me see again." And then Jesus says, "Your go, your faith has made you well." He regained his sight and followed him on the way. So it sounds like Bartimaeus became one of the followers of Jesus that day. What do you make of this passage? Anything else stand out for you there?
I like the, what you've talked about it, um, and what you've brought to it, and the things you said. It's almost like, you know, what I thought is like, well, Jesus is actively listening, and I mean, God is all-knowing, he doesn't need to listen, but it's probably was important for, um, Bartimaeus to, to feel listened and to be able to, like you said, to be able to speak when he needed. You know, and it's something that we as humans could learn from when we listen to other people.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Nancy, not to assume that we know the answer. You know, to what people are thinking, you know, "What do you want me to do for you?" Um, I used that when I was a hospice chaplain. I'd go into somebody's home, or I'd be, um, with someone, and I would say, "What can I do for you today?" And they would look at me like, hmm, I said, "Can I get you water? Can I, you know, read scripture? What can I do for you today?" And some of them was just, "Sing me a song." Okay, we'll sing a song. What song, what song would you like? You know, or play some music, or just sit and, and talk with me. Um, and so I, it, it was important to always remember that it was not my agenda um, that was there, that the person in front of me had their own needs, and it was best for me not to assume that I know. And I think Jesus models that right here for us. "What do you want me to do for you?" Yes, Jesus, in the all-knowing sense of who he is, um, knew that Bartimaeus was blind, but didn't, you know, for all we know, Bartimaeus just, just, you know, "Help me on my way," or something else. Maybe regaining his sight was not the most important thing to Bartimaeus. Um, so giving him a chance to speak of those words. I, I think that's what prayer is all about. You know, God doesn't need us to pray, because God already knows our needs, right? And so prayer comes to us as a gift, so that we can vocalize our needs to God. And so prayer is a gift to us, so that we can be in relationship with the Holy. Um, so that we can, can, um, can just have that communication. And I think the same is true here.
I think what Nancy said is really important, because we are particularly bad at assuming we know better for those who are in what we consider to be a worse position than ourselves. So for people that are disabled or homeless, or, um, in, you know, those are just a couple of examples. We, as a society, tend to act like we know how to help the best, even though we don't, we can't put ourselves in that situation.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And we're used to, basically, people that are disabled, especially ignoring them. And, you know, we might talk to the caregiver over top of that person and not talk to the person themselves. I see it all the time.
Me too, me too. Yeah, yeah, me too. So, so true. Well, let's move into 11, all right? Um, this is the, um, Palm Sunday text that is often read, um, because it's the time when Jesus enters into Jerusalem. Um, what do you remember about this passage? What can we, just without reading it, what can we say about it? What's, what's the story?
It's very celebratory, isn't it? I mean, it's, it's, um, it's, yeah, to me, that's, it seems celebratory.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
It seems incongruous with how Jesus has behaved elsewhere prior to this time, because here he's accepting this honor of riding the, the horse or the pony in, and letting people throw cloaks and palm fronds in front of him. He's, he's acting like the Savior that people had wanted him to be, and he really hadn't acted like that before.
Yeah, yeah, but still, he's being very modest. You know, he's not riding in on the white stallion, or being carried in on a chariot, um, as kings and, and others would be. So he's being very modest in this, which, I don't know if you like to watch Jesus Christ Superstar? One of my favorite movies, especially around Holy Week time. I, I watch it every year, because I just love it, and I love to sing. So, but this scene, this, this scene always sticks out for me, with Jesus coming in. And you don't see him smiling there. You know, he's very dire. Um, yeah, he's entering into his last week of his life. Everything that we're gonna read from here on out is about the last week of his life. And so I'm, I'm sure it was, it was a confusing time for him and for others, as he's coming into Jerusalem, but he knew, as he said three times or more, um, that, that he was going to Jerusalem to die. And so coming in like this, um, on the donkey. The word hosanna is an interesting word, um, in the Greek. Ho, if we break the word apart, it's, you have to do with Greek. Ho is a Greek word for God. Okay, God. San, S-A-N, is the Greek word, or a part of a Greek word for save. So we have "God save," and then na is a Greek ending of a word that reflects the plural, so us. Hosanna, "God save us." So we shout that as if it's a, as if it's a triumphant, glorful, you know, glorifying word, hosanna, 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 but we're really praying in one word. It's a prayer. Hosanna, "Save us, Lord." And so hosanna, blessed is the one who comes in the name of the Lord, blessed is the coming kingdom of our ancestor David, hosanna in the highest heaven. Um, and so this is all about, um, the nature of God saving. In the coming of the kingdom, God saves. In Jesus, God saves. Um, "God save us." And remember, when Jesus started his ministry, what did he say in chapter one? "The kingdom of God has come near." "The kingdom of God has come near." Anything else about this passage? It's so familiar to us. Um, I don't know if in, um, congregations where you are, so often it's Palm Passion Sunday. So the Palm part is all but about five minutes, no, maybe a little more, 10 minutes of the, of the focus of the service, and then the rest of the service turns to the Passion. Um, and then the reading of the Passion from the Gospel. So, um, so you get this, um, sometimes this part of it gets overlooked a little bit.
Can we talk really quick for a second about that poor fig tree?
Hmm, yeah, that poor fig tree. What's going on? What is interesting here, um, this, this poor fig tree shows up several times in these passages, all right? First, Jesus curses it, and then it withers. And then later, Jesus will teach about it when it starts to bloom again in the spring, as a sign, okay? Um, it's really kind of a, um, it's a, it, it, what Jesus is using, the fig tree, is more of a symbol for the whole of Israel. Okay, a lot of this passage, and carrying us all the way into 13, is about, um, the, the, his frustration with Israel, um, with the Jews at the time, in Jerusalem, okay? Um, and so he's, he's frustrated, and why has them, why has the Jews not seen him and recognized him? Um, and so here's this tree, or, or no leaves, it's not even the season for figs, and so he just curses it. And so there's this sense that he's cursing Israel, he's cursing Jerusalem. Um, because remember, the tone now is, "I'm entering, entering into Jerusalem to die." So he is expressing his angst. We get a completely different tone than this. And then later, they pass by that same fig tree. Peter says, "Hey, look, it's withered." This poor fig tree. And then Jesus has this piece of, "Have faith in God." Um, and then there are just, um, these, these things about how much faith, you know? If you have the faith of the nation, you can say this. Um, and it would be thrown into the sea. "Do not doubt in your heart, but believe, what you say will come to pass." So sort of a string of, of kind of odd verses that sometimes don't really go together, um, here in this passage, but it's that sense here, Jesus is, is taking a hard tone with his disciples, his followers. You know, well, of course, the fig tree withered, I cursed it. Of course it did, you know? Um, it's not gonna bloom, and so have faith, um, have faith that God is doing. Um, and the same will be true. Um, and so God, Jesus wants his disciples to, to have that sense of faith, that sense of trust in what is happening. Um, because they're gonna see some pretty horrible things in the days to come. Their faith will be tested. Their faith will be tested. Now, verse 25 might remind us of the Lord's Prayer. We don't get the Lord's Prayer here in Mark. Um, that shows up in Matthew and in Luke, um, but we don't get the words of the Lord's Prayer here. This is as close as we get. Um, "Whenever you stand praying, forgive, if you have anything against anyone, so that your Father in heaven may also forgive you. Forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us."
Yeah, I've always struggled with the word "as" in that. A headline.
Mm-hmm, yeah, 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 there is.
The implication is that you cannot be forgiven if you can't forgive others.
That is the implication. Um, and the sense of that is, um, um, because Jesus has forgiven you by dying on the cross and being raised by God, um, then why should you hold forgiveness back from anyone else? Um, I, forgiveness, again, is a gift that God gives to us, the ability to forgive another. Mostly so that, um, we're not holding on to the pain that someone else has caused us. The person who we are holding unforgiveness, who we are not forgiving, that's such a weird word, that we're not forgiving, has probably already forgotten about whatever pain they caused us. They've moved on, and we're still holding the hurt. And that hot coal is burning our hand. Um, and God's relief to us is forgiveness. It doesn't mean we forget, it doesn't mean we become best of friends, or, you know? It just means that we, we let it go to God. Um, and then, um, and then we can live free from the pain. So the ability to forgive someone else is, is a gift that God gives to us. We need a lot of help with that often. Because it's, it's really hard. Um, we hold on to hurts out of protection, a lot of times. Protect us, and we should be protected. Um, do we need to say anything about the cleansing of the temple? We jumped over that to go to the fig tree. Why is Jesus so angry with the temple stuff?
Well, because they're selling the offerings to people. There, there's a markup, they're profiting off of the people's offerings that they are requiring. It's similar to the sale of indulgences in Martin Luther's time.
Exactly, exactly right. Um, the whole sense of the need for a sacrifice from the Old Testament has been monetized. So you can't just bring your best turtledove. You have to go to the market in front of the temple and buy the best stuff. And you ha, can't just bring the five cents you have in your pocket that has the face of Caesar on it. You have to go to the, the marketplace in front of the temple, then exchange your coin. Because you can't give your temple tax with coin that has Caesar's head, head on it. So you have to exchange it for one that is appropriate. And so, um, those running the temple has become a business, and they're monetizing this. And Jesus like, "No, that my house is to be a house of prayer. It is not to be this." Um, and so what was temple had become this huge, um, structure, because they have expanded it to allow for the money changers and the selling of all of the, the animals and everything that was needed, um, to make an offering. So he's pretty mad about that. He's cleaning out the temple. Uh, his quest, he, his authority gets questioned by some chief priests and scribes. They try to trick him by asking him a question, and he turns the question right back on them and says, "So did the baptism of John come from heaven, or was it of human origin?" And they, they argue amongst themselves, because they kind of like, well, if we say this, he's not gonna do that. If we say this, then we're saying that. So they choose not to answer, and then he chooses not to answer their question. It's like, "I'm not gonna play your game." You know, he's like, "I, I'm tired of you. I've been playing your game my whole life, and so I am tired of you, and I'm not gonna play your game." Now, can we move into 12? Chapter 12. We got the parable of the wicked tenants. The question about taxes. Um, the question about resurrection. And then the giving of the first commandment, as Jesus interprets it. Any questions or thoughts about those? Do we wanna focus on any of that more? The parable of the wicked tenants is really an allegory. Okay, it's an allegory. Again, it's about Israel and the Jews at the time. So the vineyard represents Israel. The tenants who are wicked are the Jewish leaders who are taking advantage of, of the, um, of the, the landowner, who is God. The slaves are the prophets who spoke God's messages. So remember that they'd send, when the time for the harvest came, the landowner sent one slave, he gets killed, one slave, he gets killed, one slave, he gets killed. So that's all about the prophets who were killed, um, for speaking the word of the Lord. And then the beloved son who goes in, um, in hopes that he will reap the harvest, is killed, because he is the beloved son of the landowner. So.
I think it's interesting that they think that if they kill the son, that they will inherit.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's the Pharisees and the scribes and the religious leaders at the time. If Jesus just wasn't around, life would be better for us. We could continue doing what we do in the temple, we could continue doing what we do, um, with the, with the Jewish people. We can be in a kind of a cozy relationship with the Romans. They leave us alone, if we leave them alone. So if it wasn't for Jesus, we could go on back to the way it used to be.
Well, it's all about the power.
Oh, yeah. It is. You're taking away power. So we gotta get rid of Jesus. Um, so it is, again, Jesus is, in the same sense that he warned his disciple that this is about to happen when we go to Jerusalem, he's telling this parable of the wicked tenants, um, again, as a warning to what, what is about to happen. "This happens, and it's about to happen to me." And so the Pharisees and the scribes who were, uh, figured out it was about them, wanted to arrest him. They feared those who were around him, so they left, they went away. They whispered over here in the corner, "We gotta find a way to trick him. We're gonna look for Judas. We're gonna find the one who will, who will turn him in." So they are conspiring. That's the same thing about paying taxes. Um, the Pharisees, um, again, trying to trick Jesus. And Jesus doesn't fall for it yet, again. "Give to Caesar what is Caesar, give to, give to God what is God." "These poor Sanjuenses, they are sad, you see."
They're so sad, you see.
They're so sad, you see, because they don't believe in the resurrection. They're just so sad. That's how I remember the Sanjuenses. They're sad because they don't believe in the resurrection, and they only listen to the five books of Moses, and they don't pay attention to anything else, and so they are sad, you see.
I had never heard that before.
Sad, you see. Yeah.
You haven't been out to camp very much. There's a whole song about, oh, they're so sad, you see.
Yeah, when you, when you, when you go to kids camp at Camp Agape, you know.
No, I went to Luther Rock, and it was a very long time ago.
Very long time ago. My, I sang the song about the sad you see. Yeah. So they're talking about who belongs to who in the resurrection. Um, and so the Sanjuenses, again, because they don't believe in the resurrection, are just asking this question only to try to get Jesus in trouble. And so, um, "You know neither the scriptures nor the power of God, but when they rise from the dead, they neither marry nor given in marriage, but are like angels in heaven." The Sanjuenses didn't believe in angels either, because the angels aren't mentioned in the five books of Moses. Um, "As for the dead being raised, have you not read in the book of Moses and the story about the bush how God said?" And this is an important twist in this. "God said, 'I am the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob. He is God, not of the dead, but of the living.'" "You are quite wrong." Have you ever heard Jesus tell somebody they're wrong? Oh, right, wrong. But this sense of "I am," hopefully that, when you hear that, you remember the story of Moses at the bush, but you might also think of the Gospel of John and Jesus, um, "I am" statements. "I am the living bread, I am the gate, I am, I am." In the Hebrew, "I am" is a word that, that is a, well, it's called a, a present participle. It is a, it is a, an ongoing word. So "I am," and "I am still," and "still," "I was, I am, and I am to be, and I'm just always am." So we would translate this in, um, in Hebrew classes, Jesus is, uh, God is the happening one. He's just always happening. He always is. And so, um, oh, Lois Harrington wants to come in. So he always is, um, the God that is happening and active in our life. And so Jesus says, "You're so worried about what's happening to the dead, when you need to be and remember that God is the God of the living, and that in heaven we are, we are with God." So, um, does that make sense? "I am, the God is the happening one." Hey, Lois, can you hear us?
I can.
Oh, good. Welcome to Bible study.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are in chapter 12, and we're at verse 28.
Okay.
We can't see you, so if you wanna turn on your camera, your can, um, or just leave it off, it doesn't matter. So at verses 28, um, down to 34, as we get this exchange, again, the scribes are disputing with one another. They're, they're really arguing with each other so that they can get Jesus in the argument. You know, that kind of way, kids do that. They're gonna argue just so they can hook mom or dad to get into the argument with them. So that's sort of what's happening. And they ask, "Which commandment is the first of all?" And Jesus says, "Here, O Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one." Um, so that's from Deuteronomy 6. "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your strength." And that picks up also in Deuteronomy. Um, and then the second is, "You shall love your neighbor as yourself. There is no other commandment greater than these." Anything about that? So then we get the question about David's son. So then we get the question about David's son. And Jesus denouncing the scribes and the widow's offering. Anything about those passages? You hear, you hear the widow's offering quite a bit. Shall we move into chapter thirteen? Are we okay with that? Um, did you read through chapter thirteen before tonight? There's no, there's nothing wrong if you didn't, but I'm just going to get your reaction to this chapter. How did it make you feel?
Guess I hadn't read Mark for a while because we don't talk about this big soliloquy here very much.
No, we don't.
Does it come up in the lectionary?
Not much of it. Um, so much of the last week of Jesus focuses on fourteen and beyond. We rarely get Mark thirteen. Um, and so.
Very much reads like Revelation and the foretelling of the future and.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah.
So much so that it's often referred to as the little apocalypse. Um, where the revelation to John is the major or the big apocalypse in the book of Revelation. Apocalypse is just a word that means revelation. Um, and generally is focused on the end of things, last things. Es- um eschatological. It's another good word. I had to carry a dictionary around with me all through seminary. What's that word? I don't have that. I never heard that word before I came class. But that's a, that's a a word that means the last things, um last things. So. This um this piece of chapters, this chapter thirteen is one great big sermon. One great big discourse from Jesus. Um, and rather than thinking of it as apocalyptic. Um, we could think of it as um Jesus speaking about what it is to endure. What it is to endure the persecution that is ahead of him. Um, there are five times Jesus speaks about um enduring. Um, it about the charge to see, the alarm, the worry, the endure, keep alert, keep watch. So there's this. Emotional call for the disciples to pay attention. To pay attention. Um, and so uh this is um, this is an unbroken speech. You might consider it a farewell discourse. This is the really the last big set of teaching that Jesus is going to give. Um, before he is handed over, betrayed and handed over. And so um, so it begins with the disciples asking a question in thirteen verse four. Um, they ask, tell us when um. Well, Jesus comes into the temple and he sees the large stones and the large buildings. And he says, not one stone will be left here upon another. All will be thrown down. And then the disciples say, tell us when this will be and what will the sign be that these things are about to be accomplished? So that's the question that starts this whole discourse. And so Jesus spends the rest of thirteen answering the question. Okay? Any questions so far? First he speaks about avoiding the false teachers that are gonna come along and try to tell you things. Many will come in my name and say, I am him, and they may lead many astray. When you hear of wars and rumors of wars, do not be alarmed. This must take place, but the end is still to come. This whole sense, this is, this is what gives rise to the whole rapture theology. Okay, that, did you wear the rapture book, the Left Behind books, that whole series? Um, and so it is verses and chapters like this that feed into that narrative. Um, but really what Jesus is saying is. There's gonna be bad stuff happening. And Jesus is anticipating and pointing to the destruction of the temple. The rise of the Romans and the stronghold that they have. Um, being taken into um into captivity. Um, so there's just so much going on here that Jesus, um, Jesus is longing for them to pay attention and not miss it. He so wants them to trust. What are your questions so far?
Don't you think? That the this verse was applied to them, to the people then? But we could apply it to our lives today with so much happening in a sense.
Yeah, I think we can. Um, but the focus need not be on um what's going to happen at the end of time. But how we persevere in the present time. Um, Jesus is really trying to direct, he's he's telling the disciples and us. We live in a fallen and broken world. Bad things are going to happen and are happening. Um, there will be wars, there'll be famines, there'll be earthquakes, there'll be all of these things. Bad stuff is happening everywhere. Um, but have faith. Remember early in eleven when Jesus says, have faith? Okay, he's saying again here, be strong, persevere, hang in there. You gotta be courageous in this time. Um, because what did um Jesus say at the very beginning of Mark? The kingdom of God has come near. So God is holding on to the, to you now. And will continue to hold on to you when all of these bad things happen. So it's really about strengthening the disciples. Encouraging them to persevere. When they go through sufferings. And it's not so much about the end of the world. Even though it reads that way sometimes. Um, but Jesus is speaking to real people who are facing real persecution. And it's gonna get worse. Okay, it's gonna get worse. So that's all this language about the suffering, um. Let's see. Here in verse twenty-four of thirteen, and if I go too fast, call me back. But in those days after the suffering, the sun will be darkened and the moon will not give its light. And the stars will be falling from heaven and the powers of the heavens will be shaken. Then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power and glory. Then he will send out his angels and gather his elect from the four winds, from the ends of the earth to the ends of heaven. How's that make you feel?
It is hopeful if you're one of those, the elect.
Yeah. The elect word is um. It's a word that comes from Daniel. Um. And is a word that's associated with being believers and followers. Um, and um, and the sense that. Not to be exclusive, which is why I like the rest, from the four winds, from the ends of the earth to the ends of the heaven. But the kingdom of God has come near in Jesus. God is active at work in the world where God wasn't. Seen as powerfully before when Jesus came. And so God is active again, has has come down to earth. Um, and God is going to gather. Um, and and gather all who are the elect, in the sense that all are the elect when Jesus comes. Not that some will be left out. It's not that sense of the rapture. Where you're seeing coming in the clouds and one will be taken up to heaven and the others will be left in the field. You know, it's not that sense that comes from um, from Thessalonians that Paul wrote. Of of the rapture being taken up into the sky, but that the Son of Man is coming. And with his angels, he's going to gather. All from the ends of the earth, all into heaven, God gathers. So again, this is a message of hope to strengthen and sustain the followers of Jesus. And the people at that time and the people for whom the Gospel of Mark is written. Remember, we said it was written around sixty-four to sixty-eight. And the temple was destroyed in seventy. So by the time the Gospel of Mark is written, things are getting bad. They were already bad. Now they're really bad. And the destruction of the temple is soon to be there. Okay, so the book is, this chapter is written to, as word of encouragement. It's hard to remember because we wanna position this as during Jesus' time. And yes, it was during Jesus' time. So we position it there, but we also remember it was written down. Almost forty years after Jesus. So the writer of Mark has taken what the message of Jesus. And and helped it into the present day of the people who are reading, who are hearing this gospel for the first time. You see? That's why the context of when it was written is so important.
So when it was written, it was after the temple was destroyed?
No, just before.
Oh, just before.
Temple's destroyed in seventy.
Okay.
According to Josephus and some of the other historians of the time. So it was destroyed around seventy and the Gospel of Mark was written around sixty-eight.
Okay.
So um, so the the gospel writer is is seeing that this is a, this is going to happen. This is happening. Jerusalem is being destroyed. It wasn't just a one-time destruction.
Sure.
Um, it was an ongoing destruction. Um, and so I've been reading some history about this and, you know, Nero, who was the emperor at the time of Jesus and all of that. Gone, way gone after Nero. Um, now it's Vespasian, Vespasian and his stepson Titus. And it's Titus who is, who goes into Jerusalem and and causes all this destruction. And so, yeah. I found that to be interesting. All right. So then we get at the end of thirteen, this necessity to to pay attention for wa- watchfulness. Um, keep awake. This is repeated. And this is one of the passages that we get in the lectionary. Um, often during Lent. Um, no one knows the day or the hour, neither the angels nor the Son of Man, only the Father. Beware, keep alert, for you do not know when the time will come. It's like a man going on a journey when he leaves home and puts his slaves in charge, each with his own work, and commands the doorkeeper to be on the watch. Therefore, keep awake, for you do not know when the master of the house will come. In the evening or at midnight or at hot crow or dawn, or else he may find you asleep when he comes suddenly. What I say to you is, I say to all, keep awake. So it's that urgency of staying awake. I, you know, we we believe that the writer of the Gospel of Mark. Anticipated, as did the disciples of Jesus' time, that Jesus was gonna come right back. You know, that the Lord was coming soon. And that, you know, the hope that he didn't come right after his death, so he didn't come in forty and he didn't come in fifty. You know, he didn't come right away, but maybe now that things have really gotten bad and there's Jerusalem's being destroyed. And the temple's on the edge of being destroyed, maybe Jesus will come again now. You know, so all of this sense of urgency to keep awake. Um, and so. If we can sort of wrap our heads around this, this chapter, I think, intends to be inspirational. Um, to lead to calm, to patient, to courageous endurance. For the people of Mark's time as he's writing. Um, and as Jesus spoke for the people after his death and resurrection, after he ascends to heaven. That sense of calmness, patience, courageous endurance, um, it's, it's an inspiration. Um, peace. And so this, I I like this Bible study here, Interpretation. I don't know if you've seen this. Um, Interpretation is the Bible study series that I use a lot. Um. And um, it's, this book is by Richard Dybert on Mark. And he does, I think, a really good job with this, um, the study of Mark. But he points out in this that chapter thirteen reveals the character of discipleship. That it's a matter of the heart. Okay, so it's a matter of of right relationship, matter of the heart. It's a matter of today. Living in the presence, present, not tomorrow. Don't worry about the end of things. Worry about life today. Because that has enough troubles of its own, as Matthew says. It's a matter of clear sightedness. So paying attention, don't be misled by false teachers and false prophets. Be clear sighted, pay attention to what, to what is happening. It's a matter of ultimate trust. Um, that, that things are, uh, things are happening, um. That God's got this, you know, so that sense of ultimate trust, focus perseverance. We don't persevere without being focused on it. You know, we have to get up each day and say, I'm gonna persevere today. Um, so it's a conscious decision to persevere. And it's a matter of humility. And so um, that's how he lifts up what the message of chapter thirteen. And instead of thinking of it as apocalyptic. He recommends that we think about it as kingdom of God literature. That it it is revealing the kingdom of God that Jesus has already ushered in. When he says, the kingdom of God has come near and that God is already, has already and continues to intervene in this world. And so we need not be fearful. Of what has happened. What do you think of that?
I think this chapter could be an encouragement to Christians today.
Yes, I think so too. If we can set aside our thoughts about, this is only about the end times. You know, this is only about um, the world falling apart. Um, and that's where it gets hard. We have whole churches and and writers who write about the end times, who are all about scaring people to death. You know, you gotta get right with God or you're gonna be left behind. The word rapture never appears in scripture, by the way. Not even in the original language, the Greek.
Think that this really ties in what you said the first night about the whole theme of Mark. And the perseverance and the urgency and and um. I like tonight what you're talking about, staying awake and being watchful. It just ties it all together from what you said the first night.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. It's as if um, Jesus won't say a whole lot. Once we get into fourteen. And you know, he's got a few things that he'll say and we'll read um as he continues to um, to teach and to be with his disciples, but. He doesn't have any long discourses. And so this is, this is it. This is his final message um of encouragement. And so we've had throughout the whole of Mark. It's all been pointing to, as you said, Kim, that sense of perseverance, the urgency. Um, and Jesus is teaching that, um, just as he knows he's about to enter into his, well, he's in his last week. But he's entering into those final days. Um, and so this is his last chance to say to his disciples, get with it. Get with it. Keep awake, persevere, be strong. Um, and um, and and don't be afraid. So, yeah, thank you for that. So, yeah, thank you for that. So next week, does anybody else have anything to say about Mark thirteen? Before we. Next week, we're gonna look at Mark fourteen, um which is, um has Judas betraying the Passover. The Lord's Supper, Peter's denial and the prayer, Gethsemane and the betrayal and the rest of Jesus. And then we go into fifteen, Jesus for Pilate. Um the soldiers mocked Jesus and the crucifixion, and we'll go all the way through to sixteen. Um so we're gonna talk about that final um basically three days of Jesus's life. So um, read that in its entirety, if you can, in one sitting. Um so that you get the sweep of this narrative. And um and then we'll come back and talk about what that's all about. Okay? All right. Well, it's right about seven thirty, so um may I say a closing prayer?
Sure.
All right. Good and gracious God, we thank you for your witness to us this night through the words of scripture. We thank you for Jesus and for his encouragement and for the model of his life that calls us to be. Um to be faithful and to be courageous as we move through the ups and downs of our own lives. We thank you for the witness of the disciples as they show us how it is to persevere. And we ask your Lord that you will guide us as we continue to persevere in our own lives. That you will hold us tight to your heart, that you will shower your love upon us, that your Holy Spirit will fill our hearts with peace. And that you will lead us into each and every day. Protect our world and this country from all that might be causing us harm. And continue to show us the way of your light and the way of peace. Help us to be people of peace in our time. In Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everybody.